Monday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty at four P M. Does the town council have to call a meeting to order for them as well?
Yes, to do.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, we'll call our meeting to order.
Okay, so the first item on our agenda is discussion and potential action regarding the changes to management agreement between the town and the Shoreham, the Water Commission and the Sewer Commission. I'm assuming that you guys had a chance to see what was in the packet there. There's really no changes as far as, other than setting some of the rates in there, which are usually traditionally done a little bit later, but as far as I know, Amy, there's no other changes in there, are there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right.
The only change would have to be the signature page for the.
Well, yeah, that, that, that's a given, but this is actually a copy of last year because there are no changes in there. I already made that comment to Susie on that earlier and John too.
Okay.
Okay, so other than that, then that, that's it. Are there any changes that the town council is looking for?
I don't believe so. Anyone, can anyone have any, any changes they want to talk about?
Okay, we, the Water Commission does neither, so I guess a motion would be, well, do we have to, actually, until we get the actual final copy, do we need a motion on this?
So you can vote with those minor changes.
Okay. All right, I will make a motion that we approve the, the management agreement between the town and New Shoreham, the Water and Sewer Commissions with the changes as noted, basically with the, having the town manager's name changed to the current manager in there.
And this is John Bernig, Water Superintendent. You're gonna have to note the blanks for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two sewer district fee and the water district fee. You're gonna have to make, note what that dollar amount is so that can be filled in.
Okay.
It was forty thousand dollars for sewer, forty thousand dollars for water was last year, and I don't believe there's any changes this year, as Amy.
Okay, I assume, because there were no changes, I didn't know that we needed to make that in there other than the name, but I will so note those changes. So we'll need a second from the Sewer and Water Commission.
Five seconds, Diane.
Okay, all in favor? And you want to take a roll call there, Susie? I'm not sure who some of these other participants are.
Sandra? Sandra, you have to unmute star six if you're.
No, I answered, I thought I did. Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Brad?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Discussion potential action regarding the Rhode Island Water Resource Center grant proposed by Thomas Bovin, which is a U R I professor, I believe, for the Black Island Water and Use Availability Study. And John can kind of go into the detail on that. This is for informational purposes as well.
Um, we got to rewind because the town council needs to make motions as well, Brad.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, David? Usually we have the Water Sewer make a motion on that, and usually we may have the town council make a motion to the same.
That's correct. David Petracca here. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the, the agreement between New Shoreham Water and Sewer Commission and New Shoreham Town Council as presented today.
Second.
Second by Andre, all those in favor, Andre?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
Uh, do we have Sven? Yep, Sven?
Aye.
I vote in the affirmative also, motion carries five to nothing, thank you.
Okay, John, do you want to move on with item four there?
We, we have, is discussion of any major policy changes for town council is number two.
Right, we just, well, we kind of went over that when we were talking about it. We have no water, we have no changes for the Water Commission. I don't believe there's any changes for the Sewer Commission.
The only major policy change would be, and it's not a, it's not a done deal or anything yet, it's just been presented to us by the Charter Commission. There's a suggestion that the, there was a suggestion that the Water and Sewer Commission, the by virtue of some sort of legislation eliminated and taken back over by the town, but I think the council talked, talked that through the other night. And I'm not sure that that was, that came out of the meeting with a glowing reception. Am I wrong? Correct me if I'm wrong, anyone on the council.
I thought it was the wording that would provide, provide for that measure, to, to leave it in was just the, was being basically, don't mess with it, just leave it as is and not make any changes regarding, in, in those regards.
Okay.
Specific sewer, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, never mind then, we're good.
All right, that's something we weren't aware of, so. So we have for the, for the, as far as major policy changes formally for the Water and Sewer Commission, we have none that we're proposing. Okay, so John, item four.
Um, so this just fell in my lap recently, and I'm not sure, Ken, I know you're aware of Valerie Preller. I don't know if you guys know Valerie. She, on the island, she is the director at Beemy. And she's also a, either a hydrogeology or hydrology student at U R I, I believe seeking her PhD. And I've been contacted by her and Dr. Thomas Bovin, who seems like a fairly accomplished professor in hydrology and hydrogeology. They have contacted me about getting a water use and availability study completed for the island. The last time this was done was twenty years ago by Ann Beeger. Ann Beeger used to, did a few studies out here. And they're very comprehensive and, and they're great studies. In your packets, there's a pre-proposal that Dr. Bovin put together about what this would entail. Essentially, what they're doing is going to the Water Resource Center for grant money. And I believe if the town council and the water board would agree to writing a letter of support, I included what I'm calling a sample in here of, it's not necessarily a draft, it's just kind of like the, here's a gist of what I'm thinking, of how this could benefit the community. And I, I, I think it's very important. I think, in, in my opinion, a lot's changed on the island in twenty years. And I think it would be nice to revisit a water use and availability study. So what I'm looking for is for you guys to approve a letter of support to be sent to the water, the Rhode Island Water Resource Center in support of this study and a grant for this study.
It sounds good to me.
Yeah, I mean, it's a no-brainer.
It is a no-brainer, especially if it's on full grant, and, and it would be good, given the twenty-year span since the last study. Let's see where things stand.
Who did the, Martha, who did the last study?
Uh, Ann Beeger, who did multiple studies out here. I believe she was also involved with U R I and the U S G S.
Okay, thanks, that's a familiar name, thank you.
Do we need to take a vote now or at the next town council meeting? John, do you need it quickly?
Um. I mean, it, it's, it's really up to you guys. I, I believe the water board could vote on it now. If you guys want to vote on it now, that's fine. I figured it was a good meeting to bring it up in since everyone was in the same spot. You know, i- if you want me to put together a better letter or a different letter, I don't know whether it'd be cur signed or different letters, I, you know, I don't really know how it looks. This is all kind of, fell in my lap a couple of weeks ago, so it's really up to you guys.
But John, do you just need a motion for us in support of this from the, the sewer, I mean, from water in this case?
From water, I'd need a, a motion to send a letter of support, you know, a letter of the support, supporting a water use and availability study by Tom Bovin.
All right, I'll be happy to make a motion that we send a letter of support for Dr. Tom Bovin's proposed water usage and availability study, since the last one was not done as, as twenty years old.
I'll second.
Second in by Sandra. Diane?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Andre?
Hey, thank you. I'm wondering if we need a letter from you to ask for support from this that we vote on at our next meeting? Or if we can, because we don't have actually anything to vote on right now, we don't have a letter. But I don't know if we, I don't know if we need that, but if we do need that, I would cer, I would certainly support getting that on our next agenda.
You actually do have a letter in the packet from John for the request and support of it from the Black Island Water Company. All right.
Well, it's a sample, it's a sample letter. It's not a letter from me saying, hey, town council, please support it. So I will write that letter and you, you can get it on your next council agenda. Does that sound good?
Appreciate that, John.
Why can't we just do it?
We can if you want.
It's not that complicated.
Time and effort.
You can make a motion if you want, Martha.
Uh, whether the council support the water, uh, what do we call them now, company committee?
Use and availability study.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Martha, seconded by Andre, I believe. Or was it Sven?
It was Andre.
Andre, thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor, Andre?
Aye.
Sven?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
I vote in the affirmative also, motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, I, well, I talked about it earlier, that kind of out of sequence on the agenda, but any major policy changes with regards to Sewer Commission? We kind of did it all at the same time. There are no proposed changes to the Sewer Commission side either.
You're missing number five, Brad.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Number five is discussion potential action regarding thirty-two Dodge Street Block Island Opco LLC's application for allocation excess of two thousand gallons per day concerning the property located on lot one twenty-three of tax assessors plat six, including recommended special conditions, cost sharing and/or contributions in the aid of construction in accordance with the Town and Shoreham Ordinance, Article Six, Section Nineteen, under Section two point three, paragraph A of the Water District Rules and Regulations. Because this is such a large request for allocation, it actually, according to our guidelines, would also need to go to the town council as well. I'll let John kind of explain what's going on for that, but this is for the surf property, basically.
It's for Lark Hotels Grove Inn, which is behind the Gables Inn, which I think everyone's aware of at this point. So like Brad said, because it's over two thousand gallons, it triggers different checks and balances, I'll call them. Particularly, and if it's over actually twenty thousand gallons, the Water District and Town Council may require special conditions for cost sharing. So what we've done here is, we've just come to you. I believe that the Water and Sewer Board has already approved this at their previous meeting. And, you know, I, to be honest, I, we don't deal with this very often. I don't know if Jim wants to chime in on it, but there seems to be written into our rules and regs and also actually Article Six of the town ordinances to have a check and balance with the town council to get something like this approved. And if there's any special conditions that require more cost sharing, it's really the wording here. Jim, do you have any more to say on this?
Just to summarize, as we do each year, all of the residents that need additional water or sewer allocation come to the board and ask for a certain allocation. Under the regulations, because we're over two thousand gallons per day that is being requested, it needs a, a vote of the town council to accept these conditions as well. We've examined the flow, is speaking from whether the wastewater can handle the additional capacity. And with the water production, we've examined both of those options, and both of those are within the operating parameters that we can handle on a daily basis, especially during the summer quarter. Because everything is based upon the summer quarter. So it is direct, you know, the, basically, it is up to the town council now to vote whether or not they want to accept the, this, it's called Grove Inn, which is a housing for, I believe.
The surf.
The surf hotel. And, and so, you know, I reckon the, the commission's recommendation was to approve it, bringing it before the town council for their approval. If you approve it, then they can get the allocation and pay the impact fees that will be voting on, or sewer allocation fees that will be voting on after this meeting.
What you're looking at is basically sixty-eight hundred thirty gallons per day is what they're requesting.
That's for both water and sixty-eight hundred.
Each, each, I'm sorry.
And sixty-eight hundred for sewer.
Um, question, we, in, in the packet, we've got two different, I, I'm looking at two different sheets. One for, both for plat six, lot one twenty-three, through two buildings. And the only, I mean, the differences I'm seeing between the two sheets is, is quite a bit. One's indicating sixty-eight thirty gallons per day, and the other one's indicating one hundred sixty-three gallons per day. What's the second sheet that I'm looking at? I don't understand.
I, I. One is for the Gables itself, if I'm not mistaken. One, I'm sorry, one is for fire allocation versus domestic water and sewer.
Is that the fifteen thousand gallons?
Yes. That's correct.
That, that's not, that's not indicated on here anywhere clearly, so I just, that's why I had the question, thank you. Oh, yes, it is, new sprinkler fire service, I see. I apologize, it's at the top of the sheet, checked off in the box. Very good.
And Brad, just to be clear, the, the Water and Sewer Commissions actually do need to take a vote to approve. We had voted to waive the deadline, the August first deadline at the last meeting, and to continue it to this meeting with the town council to discuss jointly, where any approval and conditions would be discussed, provided by staff, those conditions, if any.
Okay, well, I know there's some cost sharing in there. So before I make a, a motion for this, or we make a motion, do you want to re-review some of the cost sharing concerns you had, John and Dylan?
This is John Bernig. I believe the cost sharing, and David could speak to this, was about the time that was spent from Jim and David, I believe, to be reimbursed without, is that correct, David?
And that was one thing that had been discussed in terms of staff review costs. You know, I don't know if there were any other costs of construction or improvements or anything of that that needed to be tacked on. That was something that was going to be done in the month. I do note, I believe it's the applicant engineer is available here on the call.
I, Joe Doohail from the pre. I've been working with John Bernig and Jim James, Jim Jeremiah, on the sewer and water allocation. So I can answer, I can answer any questions.
Jim, did you have any other costs? Sorry.
No, I, I think basically, David, as you said, the idea was to recover all review times in costs that incurred by the both the water and the sewer commission to date. And as we move forward, the developer needs to pay for all costs associated with, with the design review. Remember, this review that we undertook to accept this development, it doesn't, does not include the final design review prepared by the client or the pre-engineering for the Grove Inn. So all costs associated with our review, any legal reviews that are required, and any staff time would be recuperated as part of this cost. Other than that, I think the impact fees, I, I'm sorry, I apologize for saying impact. The contribution and need to construction fees will cover the other debt services and the reinvestment of the capital as outlined in the program.
Okay, if there's no other questions, then I will make a motion that we, from the Water Department, that we will approve the proposal as described by John and our engineer, Jim Jeremiah, for the property, the water service located at plat six, lot one twenty-three, thirty-two Dodge Street.
I second.
Second in by Diane, all in favor, Sandra?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll also make a, a motion that we approve the, the allocation for the sprinkler fire service at plat six, lot one twenty-three, thirty-two Dodge Street, as dictated, with any additions by Jim or, in this case, John as well.
Second?
Second.
Second in by Diane, hey, Sandra?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and another motion would be in order to approve the sewer allocation as applied for plat six, lot one twenty-three, thirty-two Dodge Street, and any additional subsequent charges to go along with the construction and approval of it.
Second?
Second.
Second in by Diane, Sandra?
Aye.
Brad?
Brad says aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, for the council, I'll make a motion to also approve the proposed sewer, proposed sewer allocation for plat six, lot one twenty-three, owner's name, thirty-two Dodge Street Opco LLC, for allocation year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Both sewer and, I mean, both of water service and sprinkler fire service. As, as same, with the same wording as presented in the motions by the Sewer and Water Commission.
Second.
Second by Andre, for the discussion by the council.
Are we doing sewer and water right now?
No, we're just doing, just doing water, keeping them separate.
Thank you.
All those in favor, Andre?
Aye.
Sven?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
I vote in the affirmative also. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the last item on our agenda for the Sewer and Water Commission is the, just I, any issues of future concern or discussion with the town council on your part.
This is Sven and, and Brad, I, I don't know if it's a concern or it's as much an analysis, and hopefully my bandwidth holds up here. Really, to I guess Dylan and John and, and the Sewer and Water Commission. As, as we're starting, I sat in the planning board meeting the other day, and there was a discussion around potential subdivision, major subdivision of a piece of land right on New Harbor. We just had a big discussion about a major requirement, both for sewer and water in the peak summers that was just passed, and there's going to be more development. And my, my question is, do we need to conduct, I don't know the right words, but to conduct a study that sort of looks at capacity utilization slash development? And, and at what point will we need to have either large investments and/or start to really think through development in the commercial New Harbor, Old Harbor zones? Not really talking about expanding, I'm talking about development within the current zones that we may or may not be able to handle over time without major infrastructure investment. And I don't know if a study has been done to, recently, that, that, to realize capacity and, and thresholds, or I guess I'd love to hear from John and Dylan as to, are we worried about this? It just seems to me we're about to hit some pretty big thresholds and would love your opinions.
Well, I'm glad you asked because I have similar concerns, and we're, just to let you know, at the last month's meeting, the Water and Sewer Board motioned to us have to write a letter to the Planning Board to get on their agenda to talk about such things, like you're talking about, what's our long-term plan? When we hit capacities, you know, where does the community want to go from here? Are we saying this is it? Are, do we invest in larger capacities, you know? So I, I do agree with you. I believe that sewer has more capacity than water, in other words, water will be more, will be an issue faster than sewer will.
And John, is that because of, of pumping and throughput? Or are you worried about water tables? Can you just help me understand that a little bit?
And I, you know, that's where this water use and availability study kind of plays in possibly to it. I mean, we're, something that's changed greatly too is since two thousand is that we've become a brackish water desal facility, which is not mentioned in the previous study because it wasn't going on. So how does that affect, you know, the total? I mean, there's a number of things that we could do to increase our capacity, you know, without pulling too much water, but it's going to cost a lot of money. You know, for instance, you know, I, I believe we have about seventeen thousand gallons per day of allocation. So that's not a lot when you're taking, you know, five thousand gallon chunks a day out of it for large development. That goes really quickly. So, you know, here we are, kind of, you know, and I don't know any of the answers right now. That's why I wanted to get on the Planning Board meeting of, do we come up with a five to ten-year plan to increase the capacity? You know, is, is there a reason why we can't because of water draws? Are we, is it, is, are we over, are we overdrawing our wells? All these things, you know, play into it. It's rather complex. So, you know, I don't have any answers, but I'd like to start asking the questions of the community of the Planning Board. Maybe you guys can be involved with that. But, you know, I certainly have concerns as. You know, is, is there a reason why we can't because of water draws? Are we, is it? Is, are we over, are we over drawing our wells? All these things, you know, play into it. It's rather complex. So, you know, I don't have any answers, but I'd like to start asking the questions of the community of the Planning Board. Maybe you guys can be involved with that. But, you know, I certainly have concerns as, along the same lines as you're going, Sven.
So if I can just make one retort and maybe Ken and others, you can jump in. But I guess one question is, is this a town council or a Planning Board dialogue? Because it, it is, you know, one is understanding what the capacities are, the thresholds are. And then it's going to come down to where does the community want to go? Do we invest? Don't we invest to what John just said? So I mean, I, I think this, I don't know exactly where it falls. It could be in planning or it could be at the council level because I think it's going to branch out very quickly. And I, and part of me wants to say that the town manager should be instrumentally involved because of that DPW role. Because it's going to involve so many different aspects. So I guess my question, Ken, to you or everybody on the council is, would we invite John and Dylan and whoever to come and talk about this or what you're thinking on protocol?
John, can I jump in?
Yeah, Chris, go ahead. Chris, please.
So the council remembers when Lark Hotels presented its application in front of the town council. They identified, not they, but I think that the town identified three or four other parcels just in the downtown area that would be, or have the ability to put on, put a, another hotel or inn, whatever you want to call it, just in the downtown area. Then when you expand to New Harbor, it opens up a whole different scenario because as we all know, there are a number of pieces of property in the New Harbor area that are, let's just say, have potential. So it makes complete sense and Sven's reasoning makes complete sense when it comes to sewer and water. I know the Lark Hotel application did not pass unanimously, and I think that was a lot to do with things that weren't sewer and water related, believe it or not. It was more parking because that was downtown. But sewer and water actually should be at the top of the list because that resource and I, and I think all the utilities need to be considered because I don't know the capacity of our electric plant at, right now. And if it could handle another four hotels or, or, you know, or handle another grocery store for, I don't, I don't know. But that all makes sense to have a comprehensive discussion that includes our engineer, our sewer, our water, our town manager, all the utility directors. It just, that makes common sense. That's, that's planning. And the Planning Board obviously has to be involved. So I think it's a proper concern considering what was identified with the Lark Hotel application as well as of the most recent Planning Board request for that subdivision.
Chris, may I say something? This is Jim Jeremiah. Basically, I think one of the things, that's why this contribution and need to construction is very critical as we go forward each year. Because what we do, we, the Sewer and Water Commission, they evaluate the capacity. We take the summer quarter and that 90-day window, or 91-day window, and look at what our capacity is and our ability to either, in Dylan's case, treat the wastewater or in John's case, to provide the water that we can consume and then ultimately treat. So that, that's why that 2000, whoever put it in, and I've been around for a long time. I don't know who put that in, but that's a good, that's a good trigger. And I think as we move forward, I think that is a planning tool needs to be implemented and looked at. Yes, Sven?
I was going to say, Jim, I think, I think you guys do a really, first of all, great compliments to the meeting, to the process, all that. And, but I think it's very much year on year. I think the discussion we're having now is a five to 10-year vision as far as overall assets, capacity. Like Chris said, you know, New Harbor, I think is going to throw some wrenches in pretty quickly. So how do we think about development? And clearly on the island, you're hearing, to Chris's point earlier, a lot about congestion or parking. This, I can't wait for a discussion to suddenly double the size of one of these plants. So this is much more of a DPW broad question. And so my, my question, and Martha, you probably can, I guess I see this going more to the town council right now at first blush, having dialogue about it and figuring out with the town manager and the director of public works, how to best tackle this. To John's point, it's huge. It's a huge question.
Well, and, and let me speak to water, sewer first because sewer is always the easier one, to be honest, to attack. The wastewater division or wastewater, R-I-D-M, requires facility plannings to be conducted and updated every five years. We have not done that over the last five years. So obviously, a facility plan could take a look at the potential over the 20, 20-year projected period because that's normally what we call facility planning for wastewater does. And we can take a look at the projections and the what-if scenarios if these are developed and what the potential is. Because in accordance with DM regulations, once we hit 90% of the design capacity of the treatment plant, we have to begin that process of upgrading. Now, for, I'm sorry, for 90 consecutive days, 80% of the design capacity. Well, we'll never meet 80% of the design capacity for 90 consecutive days. Because our summer season, really, it's July and, we call it summer, July, August, September, it tends to wind down. But we need to take a look at that because that 90 days is really not 90 days for the island. It's more in the 60-day range. And this summer was a very mild summer when it comes to wastewater. We've had about a 9% reduction in our wastewater flow, an 8% reduction in water. So we've had, we, COVID this year is, is an anomaly. It doesn't happen. In most cases, you'll see that the, it's gone up every year during the summer months in a facility plan, or at least wastewater. Maybe something that should be considered by the Sewer Commission to prepare and present, you know, and then obviously it has public hearings and town input and council input to all of this development. And what is to be sewed and what isn't to be sewed because the current regulations, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, anything within the sewer district can't go to on-site systems. It has to go to the sewer.
That's correct.
So you know what, you know what I'm getting at, Sven, is that all of these things within that district have to go to sewer. Now, water is a little different. Because water, you know, with wells and what have you, they possibly can get off of the water system and go to that. But I agree that a master plan has to be looked at. Maybe the URI study is a starting point. But we need to get the town involved with how they want the plan to go. I see Dylan raising his hand.
Andre's raising his hand also.
Go ahead. Andre's hand up first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Am I speaking? Very good. So Dylan Chase, Sewer Superintendent. I just wanted to say I appreciate the fact that we're having this discussion. It is certainly an important discussion. I do believe that the, on the water end, the water study is an excellent first step in understanding the, just giving, providing everyone with the perspective of really where we stand as far as future planning. As we're planning for resiliency and other factors, as we have some of these moderate corporations coming in and continuing to develop, these are discussions that are imperative to the community because once we go down the slippery slope, there may not be any turning back. As far as the allocation goes, I just want to say that we should consider the fact that although we consider a 90-day window for the, 92 days for the average flow data that determines CAC and, and the understanding of where our allocation lies, the high-impact use is during, you know, July and August. So we have to have a consideration of that as well. Well, the one circumstance, for instance, is if John was to have to turn the valve and I was to have to treat the the town water, for instance, that's 50,000 gallons per day. I may be a little high on that number, but the point is, is do we have to consider that room as we're, as we're planning? Furthermore, if we are going to incorporate the allowance of more low-pressure systems and the discharge of water out into the ocean and not replenishing your sole-source sacroffer, does that have an impact over long term? I think all of these things just need to be played out and looked at with, you know, with the learned eye. So I appreciate this conversation and I just wanted to offer that input as well because at this point, I'm at 50% of my capacity. I average in, on any given day or normal day, setting aside the exception of Fourth of July or Victory Day weekend, I'm averaging somewhere around 225 to 228,000 gallons per day. Overall, we're looking at about 110,000 gallons per day and we're rated at 450,000. As, as far as that number goes, my capacity looks excellent. I'm able to treat everything as it comes. But I do want us to really consider looking at the high-impact use separate from how we determine our allocation as we go forward.
Andre, you had your hand up? Andre, Buddha?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I appreciate everybody's input and a lot of my questions have been answered. But to get back to the, the original question of the council, should we have this discussion on a council level? And I certainly believe that this is, you know, we've been hearing a lot lately about upcaring capacity. And I think this is a larger issue that relates to that, that we will have the discussions about. But in the meantime, Dylan and, you know, John, you know, any discussion you want to have with the town council, you know, I, I think I can speak for the rest of us where the door's always open. Or, you know, I should say that the Zoom meeting, the Zoom codes are always open. But I do think that, you know, I'd be happy to have this conversation, you know, as part of a broad outlook on the future of the island. And I do believe that the study we just authorized is a great first step to that. So I appreciate everybody's work on it. But anytime you guys need to come to us, you know, anytime, feel free.
Thank you, Andre. Martha, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just came my dog out the house. I just wanted to say, I think we, I think we're jumping the gun in that somehow, this is not ready to come to the council. I think it's import, very, it's imperative that the people who are, you know, boots-on-the-ground people are the ones that are doing, working on the numbers, working with the engineer, working with this water study that's upcoming, gathering information and looking at that and, and then, you know, downstream. But we're certainly not ready at this, at this juncture to jump into this. I think we need to have a lot more information than we have. We went through this before, the Sewer Moratorium back in the, oh God, back in the 80s, I guess it was. And that, you know, it took a lot, it took a lot of work to get out of that. And you just don't, I just, it's all, and I think it sounds wonderful, oh, well, I'll have this big discussion. I don't think, I don't think we are ready to have that discussion absent the amount of information that has to be gathered and is being gathered, as it very much sounds.
I think that, this is Brad, I think the purpose of this is just to, you know, put a spotlight on it, a flash light, getting the study approved, which we appreciate that John's doing, was talking about is going to be the first step. But there's a lot out there and, and to Sven's point, you know, our concern is, and John and I spoke about this last month as well, is that with what's going on with the Lark Group, you know, we're fine at the moment, but who's to say what's going to happen? And we need to plan out five or 10 years.
Seems to me, it seems to me the town planner should be with, with input from the sewer and water and wherever else, whatever other input is needed. The town planner, and then maybe the Planning Board might be able to put something together to then bring to the council for that big discussion. I think if it comes to the council first, we might be, it might be a little premature. I sort of agree with Martha on that.
Sven, you have your hand up? Al, you're muted.
Real, real quickly, and I thought that's where Martha would come from, and I, I agree in intent. Mary Ann Crawford is also on the call, who is the Director of Public Works and Town Manager. And I guess, I guess that would be the, the first step in my mind is pulling all the people together that are close, or as Martha said, boots on the ground. And I think, I just want to, like Andre said, we're all in, we want to help. The last thing you want to do though is to have just a room of, of dialogue versus action. So I think maybe John and Dylan and everybody, you know, get Mary Ann involved, let's figure out those next steps, Planning Board. But, but I do think there's some urgency, which is not a big capital U, but some, some timing here. And I think this does get into sustainability, that does get into development, does get into what is the island we want. And so I think this is just a very important discussion that it will take a long time to get all the answers here. But, but if we, if we start in two years, it'll be still two years. So I appreciate everybody's work and really look forward to helping out with this and hearing from you guys, as well as Mary Ann, how we move forward as a Director of Public Works and Public Works effort. Thank you very much for the time.
Mary Ann?
First of all, I apologize. For some reason, my link, I had the wrong link getting into the meeting. But recently I did meet with John and we talked about the water. And just to provide a little historical background, in another life, I worked in Jamestown. And it was at the time when Jamestown was going through a pretty severe and significant water situation. With myself and working with the staff and folks at Jamestown, we increased the water source, we added, built water tanks, we had pipelines. So I'm first in water as it relates to an island environment. The big difference between here and Jamestown, when it was Fourth of July weekend and we were running out of water, we, National Guard came in and put a pipeline across the bridge. We don't have that opportunity here to put a pipeline across the bridge in North Kingston. So I'll be happy to assist with some of this stuff in any way that I can. And I do agree, I think the study is the first step. And I've worked with the URI folks many years ago doing these studies with, with Jamestown.
John Brunick?
So the path forward here is, as I see, I will, we haven't, we have a letter pretty much finalized to the Planning Board. I will copy the town council and Mary Ann on that. And then keep everyone on the loop on this call with what's going on with the Planning Board. Does that sound like a good path forward for now?
Thank you, John, and Dylan.
I will, from the Water, Water Department and the Sewer Commission as well, we, we'll thank you guys for this. I think that, in particular, the future outlook is something that we all are aware that we need to look at. And, and this study will be the first step in that, but we want to keep it on the agendas or on the horizon.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no other discussion or concerns from anyone on the town council part or the Sewer and Water Commission?
Yeah, Brad?
Yes.
This is Martha. We just want to circle back to something that got mentioned earlier. It sounded like the Sewer Commission was unaware of the proposed charter changes. And could we?
None of us were aware of that, no.
Okay, that's unfortunate. I, well, I apologize even though I had nothing to do with it. I can, we see that the Sewer Commission does get a copy of that?
Sure.
It seemed, it seemed that to be a great depth of historical information by, with the background of how, how, what's in the charter now that was proposed to be struck had even come into being.
Well, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Let the commission look at it.
Andre?
Thanks, Suzie. No, I don't have any issues or concerns. I just wanted to take the opportunity to mention, you know, I think, thanks are in order to, to John and Dylan for the, for the work over the summer. And Dylan, I know, you know, with your testing of the waste stream for COVID, I think as far as I know, that was probably, you were probably one of the first people in your, in your, you know, your field to be doing that. And I certainly appreciate, you know, the excellence that you brought to the Spotlight in Block Island for doing that. Because, you know, it seems there are a lot of people, including colleges, are doing that now. But, you know, like I said, I really appreciate John, Dylan, the work that you guys did this summer. It wasn't easy on anyone, but I just think you should know that. And your staff, of course.
Thanks, Andre.
Thank you, Andre.
Okay, with no further ado, I will make a motion to adjourn the joint town council and sewer and water commission meeting for the sewer and water department side.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
All right, guys. Thank you very much, everyone, for attending. Anyone from sewer and water will be starting the second meeting momentarily.
The town council.
You have to sign out from this and you have to sign into the next one as well.
Yeah.
Do we, I think we may need, we may need to adjourn. Yes or no?
The town council needs to separately vote, yes. Just trying to get a word in edgway. Motion to adjourn.
Marty? So, Marty, you good?
I think I have a second.
We don't have to go to the next meeting, do we?
No.
Not unless you want to, Martha.
You're more than welcome to, yes.
All those, all those in favor, Andre?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sven?
Aye.
Martha?
Oh, I'm not sure. Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, we appoint Martha our representative at the next meeting.
I will vote in the affirmative also. Motion carries unanimously. Council meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, guys.
Mary Ann, I suspect the, the link you clicked on is for this next meeting earlier. We got two kind of back-to-back, so I'm assuming that's what happened.
All right, we'll see you soon, guys.
Yep, that's what happened.
Bye.
All righty.